Thank you for waiting, everyone. Good morning. I'd like to call to order this meeting of Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is Wednesday, October 23. I will note for the record that all three commissioners are present here in the NatU Hill Room, and we will begin with our public statement read by Commissioner Giffens.
Good morning. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
We have quite a crowd here today. We do. It's so nice. All right. So, next item on our agenda, Department Updates. Do we have Ms. Kelly here? Oh. I have Department Updates before the proclamation.
Okay. That's fine.
Let's do the proclamation. Sorry. We do have a proclamation. If you would, please, Commissioner Jones.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
This is a proclamation for Youth Hope Month, Youth Homelessness Outreach Prevention and Education Month. Whereas the future well-being of our nation is dependent on the value we place on our young people, and the prevalence of runaway and homelessness among youth is staggering, with studies suggesting that every year 4.2 million people ages 13 to 25 endure some form of homelessness. And runaway youth are often expelled from their home, have experienced trauma, struggle to meet basic needs, and are at increased danger of falling into high-risk situations, including human trafficking, and may be ineligible or unable to access adequate medical or mental health resources. And Youth Services Bureau of Monroe County is working to raise awareness, support, and resources for young people in the community. And effective programs supporting runaway youth and assisting youth and their families in providing safe and stable homes succeed because of partnerships created among families, youth-based advocacy organizations, community-based human service agencies, law enforcement, schools, faith-based organizations, and businesses. And if all of us work together, we can prevent the situations that compel youth to run away from home and encourage all residents to appreciate the role that we can all play in advocating for and providing safe alternatives to this vulnerable population of young people. And the National Runaway Safe Line is honoring November as Youth Hope Month to raise awareness of the issues facing runaway and homeless youth and educate the public about the solutions and the role they can play in ending youth homelessness. Now, therefore, we, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2024 as Youth Hope Month in Monroe County, proclaimed this 23rd day of October 2024.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate that. And we will now move on to Department Updates, and we have Ms. Kelly joining us. Other departments may raise their hand on Teams or line up behind the podium.
Good morning, Commissioners. So just a few updates. COVID hospital admissions have decreased over the past two weeks, but emergency room visits for COVID-like illness have increased as of October 15. The Public Health Clinic now has flu vaccines available for all ages. They are hosting a vaccine clinic at 333 East Miller Drive on October 26 from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And the Health Department still has free COVID tests available Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And then I did want to just introduce you to Ms. Aubrey Jones. So she is our new maternal and child health coordinator. So we are really, really excited to bring her aboard and see all of the wonderful work she is doing to create new programs for us.
Great. Welcome. Thank you. Anybody have questions for Ms. Kelly? Ms. Jones? Okay. Thank you so much. Great to meeting you. Thank you. You're welcome. Other departments have an update?
Good morning, Commissioners. Tron Inright Randolph, Monroe County Surveyor's Office. Honestly, I just get the pleasure to express my gratitude and excitement of some of the services we've been able to roll out for the public with hosting early voting numbers. Dr. John Batton, our GIS coordinator, is here to kind of present more on that, but I just really wanted to express the fact that we got such a great team working on multiple projects that hopefully will help internal operations but also provide more services to the public. I also want to highlight Irina. She is our GIS technician, and she was featured on the B-square just recently about her work with the Health Department and Food Inspection Apps. So I guess I'm just kind of here to express my gratitude, say thank you on official record, and I'll let John take it over.
Everybody. I'll sign in as well. John Batton, GIS Coordinator, Perry Township. I never said that before, but that's where I live. I've got a couple updates today. One of them is tomorrow we are having a training. Let's see if this... Okay, cool. As everybody here knows, Elevate is being deprecated by Schneider Geospatial. We are transitioning to a new property searching interface called Beacon. Garrett Bird from Schneider will be here in the Nat Hill Room tomorrow from 9:00 to 10:00, 10:00 to 11:00, and then again from 1:00 to 2:00, offering a training on kind of the Beacon interface. I think it's working pretty well right now. It's going to go live tomorrow, so we'll be having basically trainings on that. Those trainings will be recorded and available to the public as well, so that's a big thing. Two other updates I wanted to provide were what Tron kind of alluded to with some of the voting data we've been working with. I also want to give thanks to Tron for, I guess, allowing me to kind of use my creative juices and expertise to really start looking at some of the social data. That's what my background is, is in mapping social data and data visualization, and so this has been really fun to work on. This is a dashboard we created in conjunction with voter registration, showing early election voting data from Monroe County. This is updated every day as I receive data from voter reg. It's a pretty cool interface, and it's cool because it's showing that we have a great turnout for 2024, right? We have on the left here just a... This is called an indicator showing the total early votes for 2024. You can scroll through these and see what we looked like in 2016. So that's 27,000 total in 2016, and then in 2020, we had 22,899. Part of the interesting aspect of a lot of the things we do in the GIS Division is we create lots of public-facing interfaces, right? We're trying to make data transparent, but we're also trying to garner excitement among our constituents and colleagues and neighbors in Monroe County. As we shared this interface online, somebody online said, hey, you know, it'd be really cool to see how we're doing today versus in 2016 and 2020. And so what we did, we brought in data in this pie chart here, showing what this data looks like at a day-to-day basis for votes for early voting. And so as of yesterday, we are ahead of pace for 2020 and 2016 in terms of our daily votes for early voting. So some good signs for voting across Monroe County. Another project I've been working on, and this is with the Vote Center Committee, is trying to identify kind of hotspots for polling sites and precincts across Monroe County. This is a large splash screen, and large splash screens are important when you're dealing with data, especially social data, because there's nuances with this. And so I've made the little button at the bottom saying that I understand the complexity of this dashboard, right? It's kind of a catch-all, and a lot of people don't read that, and they click it, and it's like, well, did you read? No, you didn't. So on the left here, we have polling locations, and on the right, we have polling locations and precincts as well. The circles are the polling stations, the polygons are the precincts. The darker the color for the precincts, the higher the vote total; the larger the circle for the polling station, the larger the vote total for those as well. But the cool thing with this is we can kind of cruise around and see how we compared with these different locations in 2016 versus 2020, and all this information gets filtered out, and it will zoom in. So on the left here, you can see in 2016, we had 2.4,000 votes cast at Sherwood Oaks Christian Church from three total precincts, Perry 18, Perry 19, and Perry 22. And you can click on the same dot here in 2020 and get a similar pop-up, seeing that we had a few more votes there, same three precincts. So this is just a great kind of tool that I'm hoping that the Vote Center Committee will be able to utilize as they start to consider going to kind of more centralized locations and things of that nature. And I'm also hoping that this is a tool for the public to utilize to understand kind of better trends with voting across Monroe County, right? The cool thing about GIS that it allows us to do is explore spatial relationships, right? And these can be spatial relationships between people, or it can be spatial relationships between people and the environment, or vice versa, right? Not having this information mapped, you get tabular data, which you can do some stuff with, but the spatial context of it provides a lot more evidence and also kind of just ability to analyze things. So that's all I have for you.
Thank you so much. This is really exciting. It's beautiful work and really helpful for the public and for, obviously, the Election Board and the Clerk's Office. Comments or questions, Commissioner Giffens?
Just kudos. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
There's one more impressive application I think that could be very helpful if John wanted to highlight this. This is actually a way to figure out what precinct you're in. So after early voting ends, and you need to figure out what precinct you're in and what polling location, this is another site that has been created, and I think this would be a timely time to present it.
Yeah, I should have gone off the bat. Give me one moment here. Here we go. And this was... This is called our Vote Central application. And what this does is allows individuals to identify where their polling station is and also to get an idea of what's on the ballot. This was created by our GIS technician who Tron mentioned earlier, Irina Valentine Boland, who's done a really great job of kind of getting into some of the coding and scripting to pull these data sets in. So what you can do here is you can basically type in your address. I'm going to type mine here, in beautiful Sherwood Oaks. We have what's called a locator, so we're only going to be pulling addresses that are located within Monroe County. We've devised that, so when you type in 3623, you're not getting addresses in Tuscaloosa, Alabama, or something like that, right? What this is going to do is it's going to zoom in to my location. Well, it zoomed in. I think I'm clicking on it. Come on, computer. Well, it's not zooming in right now. It should zoom in. This is one of the issues with technology, but you can click on the precinct essentially here, and you will get a pop-up. I'm not using a mouse either. I'm using... There we go. Showing where your polling site is, and then the candidates that are on the ballot as well. So it gives us, as Bloomington High School South, and then the different types of candidates that are on the ballot. So yeah, just another resource that we've produced to hopefully help people stay more informed with voting, so.
Great.
Cool.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Could we put a link to that up on our main page through Election Day?
And it's actually on the... It's also on the Clerk's voter registration page, so we can certainly put a link on the main page.
Yeah, I think it'd be nice to do. That's a good idea. Commissioner Jones, questions or comments?
No questions. I just agree with my colleagues. This has been wonderful work, and you're certainly contributing a lot. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
This is really awesome work. Thank you.
Thanks.
Very cool. Are there any other departments that wish to offer an update? You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in NatU Hill. All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to public comment. Public comment is reserved, time reserved for items that are not on our agenda. Public comment should be limited to three minutes per person, and we ask that you share your name and your county of residence. There's a countdown clock that will appear on the screen, and we'll take comment from the NatU Hill Room, but if you're on Teams and you wish to make a comment, please raise your hand, and we'll accept comment.
Hello. My name is Joe Davis, and I would like to enter this for the record.
May I hand that to Ms. Purdy?
For all of them, I'll take them out and hand them out, and that way you can go back to the...
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Joe Davis, and I represent the Taxpayer Objection Petitioners, and we would like to present to you today another option for the location of the Jail and Justice Center, and that would be the open space where early voting is taking place currently at 302 South Walnut Street, that gravelled parking area south of Third Street, and it has South College to the west and South Walnut to the east, and goes almost all the way down to Smith Avenue. This is an excellent location for the new Jail and Justice Center. It keeps everything close to downtown where existing services already are. It could be built in stages with the jail on the first floor, the courts on the second, ramps such that no elevators would ever have to be used, and the taxpayers would save an extraordinary amount of money. This land has likely already had environmental impacts made on it. It is shovel-ready. It has gas, electric, water, and sewer already. Fiber is adjacent as well. It is ready to go. We could start moving as a community on this tomorrow much more quickly than any of the other proposed sites. There are no homeowners in the vicinity to be offended by a downtown justice center. Thank you very much.
Anyone else have public comment to offer for items not on our agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next agenda item, please.
Yes, move approval of the minutes from October 9, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Any comments, corrections, or edits?
Taken care of.
Yeah, great. All right. All those in favor of approving the minutes for October 9, 2024 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Next item, please.
Move approval of the Claims Docket, Accounts Payable for October 23, 2024, and Payroll October 18, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second, and we have Marissa Gerardo joining us. Good morning.
Good morning. The Accounts Payable Claims Docket for October 23, 2024 totals $12,443,806.35. The Payroll Docket for October 18, 2024 includes $1,563,402.57 in direct costs, and the remaining $672,4383 were for indirect costs for a total of $22,274,25.57.
Thank you so much. Questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
I'd just like to point out to the public that part of the reason that the claims are so high is that we're doling out collected tax dollars to a lot of different units here.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in NatU Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Claims Docket, Accounts Payable October 23, 2024, and Payroll October 18, 2024 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 3-0. I will note for the record that we have received reports from the Clerk of the Circuit Court for August and September of 2024, and also the Waits and Measures Report running September 16 to October 15, 2024. And with that, we will move on to new business.
Yes. I move approval of the BTEC Fire and Safety for Fire Alarm System Replacement for the Justice Building. Fund name, 2022 GO Bond, fund number, 4815, in an amount of $46,710.60.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Mr. Kreider.
Good morning, Commissioners. Richard Kreider, Building and Fleet. This request is to accept the proposal submitted by BTEC Fire and Security in the amount of $46,710.60 to replace the existing fire alarm panels, smoke detectors, monitoring modules, audio, audible-visual devices, and relocation of some devices into return air ducts.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
This is just pouring more money into a building that we hope to replace soon, so yeah, I bet it's necessary.
But necessary, yes. Commissioner Jones?
Yes, I agree, and the sooner it's replaced, the better.
For sure. Thank you for your attention to this. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in NatU Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving... I'm sorry. Mr. Davis.
When the new justice campus is built, right there where early voting is taking place, we'll be able to start from scratch. We'll be able to very efficiently put in all the systems that are necessary to keep that property safe. It's going to mitigate the risk tremendously for the Commissioners who hold the risk of any disastrous calamity happening. The sooner we get started on working on that location, the sooner we can start saving money from having to be continually pumped into the existing justice center. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the BTEC Fire and Safety for Fire Alarm System Replacement for Justice Building Contract signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Next item, please.
Move approval of MPI Solar LLC Solar Expansion at Karst Farm Park. Fund names, ARPA and 2021 GO Bond, fund numbers, 8905 and 4814, in an amount of $72,448.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Mr. Kreider.
I don't know if now's the time to point this out, but there's a typo in fund number for ARPA. Instead of 8905, it should be 8950.
Okay. Thank you.
This request is to approve a change order to the Monroe County Solar Expansion Contract with MPI Solar LLC in the amount of $72,448 to install solar photovoltaic generating equipment on the commons and maintenance buildings at Karst Farm Park.
Thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Giffens?
Do I need to amend my motion?
No.
Okay. Okay. I'm pleased that we're going forward with more solar.
Yeah, more solar, the better.
All right. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in NatU Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the solar expansion at Karst Farm Park with MPI Solar LLC signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 3-0, and we'll note that that is fund number 8950. Thank you. Next item.
Move approval of Nature's Way Inc. Landscaping Maintenance Services for the Youth Services Bureau. Fund name, County General, fund number, 1,000, in an amount of $2,700.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Mr. Kreider.
Again, this agenda request has a slight error in the pricing. It's actually $2,770. Thank you for pointing that out, Commissioner Giffens.
We're going to have to go ahead and amend our motion if you don't mind waiting a moment.
Amend the motion to the amount of $2,770. Sorry, it didn't get onto our agenda.
I accept it.
All right. We have a motion, a second to amend the dollar amount to $2,770. All those in favor of amending the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Please continue, Mr. Kreider.
This request is to approve the addition of landscaping maintenance services at the Youth Services Bureau for the remainder of the 2024 season in an amount of $2,770 to include bed maintenance, fall cleanup, and a one-time cutting of the Northern Slope.
Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, is the Northern Slope typically only cut once a year?
Ideally, it would be four times a year. It's a... I have some pictures I was going to share with you all if anybody asked, but it's about 200 feet long. It's very steep, very wide. Prior to the remodel, you could mow it by going up and down with a ride mower, but the building expanded that way, and a curb was installed, and you can't do that anymore. So it's... Imagine a wall of weed eaters. Yeah, and to keep it within the guidelines of the city of Bloomington Heights, about four times a year would be ideal.
Yeah, I know the city is rather particular about that. In a situation like that, if it's mowed once a year, it keeps brush and trees and things from growing up, but actually provides quite a bit of habitat that would not be unwelcome, I should imagine, at the Youth Service Bureau, and would actually save some money in mowing and all, although I realize the city may not tolerate that.
The location of it, it's right near the entrance. I think there's some aesthetics to factor in there as well.
I also just wanted to ask what's been happening with the landscaping up until now?
The maintenance?
Yeah.
Very little. I think two months ago, a project... We approved a contract to kind of take back the landscaping. It had gone by the wayside.
Right, yeah.
The mowing was happening, but we weren't able to maintain. There's quite a bit of landscaping to maintain out there.
Well, thank you. Certainly, Nature's Way has done well for us at the courthouse.
Agreed. Commissioner Giffens, comments or questions?
I just support what's happening here.
Yeah, no, appreciated. Getting taken care of, for sure. All right. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in NatU Hill. Mr. Davis.
I do recommend that Nature's Way be allowed to maintain and care for the property over there. It's important that the... It's important that the residents, the individuals who are in that location, need to feel like they're at a place where someone cares, and imagine how it's going to feel for them when, if, a justice campus is built outside of the city. of the city, and then their transportation issues will be increased. The likelihood of them succeeding diminishes. We care of our downtown. We need to keep our services local, and we need to make it beautiful everywhere, everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving Nature's Way Inc. Landscaping Maintenance Services for Youth Service Bureau, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that is the amended motion for $2,770. Next item, please.
Move approval of Spring Point Architects Design and Consulting Services for North Showers Building. Fund name, 2022 GO bond, fund number 4815, in an amount not to exceed $16,500.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Kreider.
This request is to accept the proposal submitted by Spring Point Architects in an amount not to exceed $16,500 to provide professional services to assist with the renovation of office space in the Showers Building and to a health clinic for county employees. The scope of work includes design, construction documents, contractor quoting, construction administration, plus state and local permitting.
Thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Githens?
I want to say that I support moving this into the Showers Building. One of the things that has happened is that since the city of Bloomington chose to redesign Seventh Street, they took away the handicap parking in front of our health clinic, which I find abominable. And so this will restore handicap parking for people who need to use our health clinic.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I think this is generally going to be a preferable location for the clinic. Maybe a little less convenient for some employees, but more convenient for others, so.
And there's certainly parking available.
Yes.
For employees at the Showers Building, unlike on the street, and meters and all They are going to be working within the scope of historic preservation in this building, correct?
Correct.
Okay, great. Just wanted to verify that. All right, I think it's a great idea. And it also helps out our health department, giving them a little bit more space as well. All right, so let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Spring Point Architects Design Consulting Services for North Showers Building, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Next item, please.
Yes. Move approval of Vet Environmental Agreement for Radon Mitigation Phase Three for Historic Courthouse. Fund name, Cumulative Capital, fund number 1138, in an amount of $11,943.30, although I'm not sure if it's 30 cents or 31 cents, because I'm not sure the addition was correct.
I think we're going 30 cents on this one.
Okay. All right. You have a motion?
Second.
And we have a second. All right, Mr. Kreider.
This request is to accept the proposal for a third phase of radon mitigation and measurement services at the Monroe County Courthouse in the amount of $11,943.30.
Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Githens?
People that work for the county know that I try to get through these things on the weekends, and so I apologize for being so nitpicky on things, but I don't want to mess up a contract because of it either, so.
No, I think it's great. I mean, I appreciate it.
All right. I don't have any questions about this at all, so I appreciate, again, the follow-through and making sure that we're all safe in our work environment. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Vet Environmental Agreement for Radon Mitigation Phase Three for the Historic Courthouse, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three to zero. Next item.
Move approval of Alexander Electric Inc. for three-phase transformer replacement at the County Highway Department. Fund name, Cumulative Capital, fund number 1138, in an amount of $6,246.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Kreider.
This request is to accept the proposal submitted by Alexander Inc. in the amount of $6,246 to replace the existing three-phase transformer that feeds the emergency breaker panel in the main garage at the Highway Department. This proposal will supersede the previous agreement with Alexander Electric Inc. in the amount of $5,466 for the transformer replacement heard at the Board of Commissioners meeting on 6/8/2024. The fueling station will be unavailable during the transformer installation. To limit the impact of fuel, or fleet fuel demands and space requirements for this project, the work will be performed on a weekend, which triggers weakened labor rates and a price increase from the original contract.
Makes sense. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
I appreciate the fact that this will be the least disruptive possible. I think that's important.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I'm glad you've arranged for it to be on the weekends. I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
Good idea, worth it, yes. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Mr. Davis?
As a taxpayer, I'm wondering if the work might be able to be performed in the early evening hours at a reduced rate compared to the weekend rate, since the weekend triggers higher labor rates and price increases. It seems like there might be some ability to perform some of this work without negatively impacting the majority of the fuelers, especially if they're given prior notice of the upgrade. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Alexander Electric Inc. three-phase transformer replacement at County Highway Department, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of Resolution 2024-35, Surplus Property from Multiple Departments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have the same text repeated in here in our packet that is from the previous item, but we do have the information inside the packet. So if you would, Mr. Kreider.
I noticed that. This is a resolution to declare certain personal property in Monroe County to be no longer needed and unfit for the purpose of which it was intended and to be considered surplus property for just purpose of disposal. Two tables from the Commissioner's Office that have been replaced with new. The metal's going to the salvage yard, tops to the dumpster. Health Department, two tablets, a label maker, and a BlackBerry device. The tablets and BlackBerry, they're outdated. They'll be going to TSD for their recycle process. I think we're gonna put the label maker on govdeals.com auction. Highway Department, an air compressor and two welders, all have been replaced. All will be going on govdeals.com for auction. Sheriff's Department, two wall-mounted display cases that are no longer needed, an inoperable gun safe, the display case is to trash, and the gun safe to the salvage yard. Voters registration, a shredder that's broken and unreparable, it's going to the trash.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Githens?
I appreciate the pictures that always come with these.
I haven't seen a BlackBerry in a long time. Maybe a museum might want it, I don't know, who knows?
I know, it was interesting seeing the BlackBerry.
Yeah, it's been a long time. All right, I appreciate the effort to recycle so often, and I think it's a smart way to do business, so thank you for that. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor approving Resolution 2024-35, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Mr. Kreider, thank you so much for all of your agenda items today.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. All right, next item, please.
Move approval of Life Services EAP Contract. Fund name, Self Insurance. Fund number 4700, in an amount of $12,500.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Tell us all about it, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is a contract, basically renewing our contract with Life Services, who provides our Employee Assistance Program services, and I outlined what those services are in the agenda request. We started with a three-year contract, I guess that would have been in 2021, and then this is to renew, and each renewal will be for a one-year term. We pay this quarterly, the number is an estimate for the year. We pay it quarterly based on how many employees we average within that quarter.
So the amount?
That's the total year amount, estimated.
Huh.
Does it exceed that?
I don't think it would be a problem. This is.
Okay.
This is based on historical usage?
Yes.
Okay. Well, if it does, you have to come back, but I think next time I would do not to exceed and set a number.
Oh, I got you.
Yeah, be easier, cleaner, yeah. Don't want to have to make you come back to us, although we love seeing you.
Oh, yeah.
You know, good enough to do. All right. All right. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
I appreciate the fact that this is offered to county employees.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, just thank you for taking care of all of this.
Yeah, and in addition to counseling services, work-life support, financial and legal advice, and crisis support, that's a lot. That is a lot of value there.
Yeah, they actually also support our departments. They'll do some, like, manager and supervisor-specific sessions with folks, so that's been really valuable as well.
Excellent, excellent. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Life Services EAP Contract, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Thank you. Next item.
Yes. Move approval of the 2025 Department of Corrections Community Corrections Grant. Fund names, Community Corrections Program Grant, Pre-Trial Services Grant, Drug Court Grant, and Mental Health Court Grant. Fund numbers, 9141, 9157, 9147, and 9149, in a total grant amount of $1,528,120. I will note that for the Community Corrections, the amount is $1,49,167. For Pre-Trial Services, it's $271,866. For Drug Court, it's $157,711, and for the Mental Health Court, $49,376.
You have a motion? Second. All right, thank you. Mr. Tree, thank you for waiting.
Good morning. Becca Strite, Community Corrections Executive Director and Deputy Chief Probation Officer. I am gonna keep this brief because I usually come back to you at the beginning of every year to give you a full report on the previous year, but this is our 40th, well, for 2025, it'll be our 41st year of receiving grants from the Department of Correction for all the programs you just read. It is our largest grant that we have through the department. I will note that in the past three years, the Department of Correction has not received any additional money for any increases across the state for programs. So we've been having to dip into our project income, our user fees, to supplement changes and increases in our grant. So I know that there's been a huge effort by the Community Corrections Professional Association in Indiana, the Probation Officer Association of Indiana, to get the word out to our legislators that this is hurting counties, and eventually it will harm counties and the people that we serve. So I did just want to point that out. Right now, we're fine, our project income is fine, but we are looking at possible future ramifications.
Yeah, it's really important. Thank you. Comments or questions? Commissioner Githens?
We have one of the strongest, kind of, kinds of court systems that we have, whether it's Drug Court or the others, Mental Health Court, especially Courts. We have one of the strongest system like that in the whole state, and so I'm really pleased that this is going on here.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes, I agree with that. When it comes to the pre-trial services, and I, and it doesn't sound like there's going to be more money available anytime soon or anything like that, but I would really like to see that expanded to where it could be a 24-hours-a-day, seven-days-a-week service. A lot of people are still spending a lot of time in jail when it's really unnecessary, harmful to them, harmful to their families, and there's no good reason for it other than lack of money.
Resources, yeah.
Great, great point, thank you. Now, I appreciate the work that's done on all of these programs, and just please extend our thanks, and I'm glad you have the grant again, but yes, it's worrying that the funding has been static, so good luck with the legislature. I'm just gonna say that. Good luck. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill.
Joe Davis. Thank you, Ms. Strite, for sharing with us the information regarding corrections. I'd like to note that in this presentation, it says Monroe County was also recently recognized for its 40th year as an Indiana Community Corrections Program. Well, for all 40 of those years, that has taken place downtown, where the Justice Center needs to remain. The Community Corrections, the Pre-Trial Services, the Drug Court, the Mental Health Court, all of these areas need to remain downtown. We need to not create difficulty for the families, just as Commissioner Jones mentioned, that with the pre-trial services and the incarceration, it's unfair to the families. Imagine how unfair it will be when they have to go outside of town. We can fix these issues as a community, but the community has to be involved. This is the public's money. This is the public's land. This is a public issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to offer a public comment? Seeing none, all those in Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the 2025 Department of Correction Community Corrections Grant, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries three zero. Thank you, Ms. Strite.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Next item, please.
Yes. Move approval to ratify the agreement with Autonomy Today for Correctional Center Medical Record Software.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, and we have Jail Commander Gibbons joining us. Good morning.
Good morning.
Long time no see.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, just a few hours ago, we were sitting here. Well, this is the secure record retention for our medical records. It's provided by CADMIS, but it's through our contract with Three Cs. It's absorbed into the cost. And the positive that we really like about it is if we were to separate from Three Cs as a medical provider, we keep our records. In our transition from ACH, we ran into some issues maintaining those records and providing them to Three Cs when they come in.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, that sounds like a wise decision.
Commissioner Githens?
Must be very frustrating to not have access to the records that are needed, needed to help individuals. Yeah, this is unconscionable.
Yeah, I think so too, but I'm glad you followed through with this and got this going. So I appreciate it. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none. All those in favor of ratifying agreement with Autonomy Today for Correctional Center Medical Record Software, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries three zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Move approval of ABI Systems Service Agreement for Diagnostics for the Nat U Hill Room AV Installation. Fund name: 2016 GO Bond, Fund Number: 4808, in an amount not to exceed $2,000.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Crone?
Good morning, everyone. So the audiovisual system was upgraded in this conference room, in this meeting room, back in 2020 during COVID shutdown. And Eric Evans, the previous director, and myself have tried numerous times to work with the installing vendor, trying to get things optimized. We have the infrastructure, but things just aren't performing as they should. We should have a constant issue of having to turn everybody down, not trying to get everybody up. And we still don't have adequate audio levels during peak times when the meeting rooms crowded or the air units are moving. So we are working with a company based out of Indianapolis called ABI Systems. They're currently contracted to start retooling the audio systems in courtroom 205 at the Justice Building. So I had reached out to them to look at our system, come in, actually do an onsite visit during a meeting time when they can see how this is operating, and try to get this system optimized for, so it's working properly.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
I really appreciate this. I have trouble at times hearing different individuals as we're trying to work through things. So I appreciate this.
I'm sitting, what, 30 feet away, and I can't hear you a lot of the time. So, yeah. We do. We have issues, and we know it.
Yeah, there are definite dead spots in this room. Definitely, yeah. Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I, along with everyone else, have experienced many times when I haven't been able to hear. And I know you've worked on it a whole lot, so just good luck with this.
The techs, the tech group, especially Andrew Engel, they've spent numerous hours up there trying to tweak. And they've corrected a lot of the issues that we've had, and things have improved. But there are certain parts, components to that system that we're actually locked out of that have programming code in them. So that's where we need an actual licensed dealer then to come in and open that up so we can try to get part of that addressed. So.
Wow.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, you know, this room is not, you know, it's a gorgeous historic room, but it certainly has its issues audio-wise. So I definitely, definitely appreciate you taking, taking care of this. And obviously, this is just the diagnostics, which is the first step. So obviously, there, if there's something that they can do, they will come back with another contract?
Well, we're from early discussions with them. We believe that this is a matter of just tweaking settings, getting into it. So I don't actually anticipate their need for a second call, nor do I expect there to be a need for any new components or additional parts. Because like I said, we have the infrastructure. We have quality equipment in here. It's not set up the best way.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. That's good news. Excellent. Appreciate your attention to this. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand in Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none. All those in favors of approving the ABI System Service Agreement for Diagnostics for Nat U Hill AV Installation, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries three zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of Precision Quality Contracting Service Agreement for Sheriff Reserve Building Fiber Connection. Fund name: Cumulative Capital, Fund Number: 1138, in an amount of $5,692.75.
Second?
We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Crone?
Yes. So the Monroe County Sheriff's Reserve Building, located out between the Carsh Park Facility and our highway garage, is not currently directly connected to our network as Highway and the EOC building are. It actually uses a, what's called an adaptive security appliance that has a firewall and everything built into it, to then use a tunnel to connect back, similar to like you would think of a VPN connection. Well, the setup of that is very finicky, very particular. If the power goes out and it loses its programming, then it all has to be redone. That's happened to us on numerous occasions, even with UPS backup to it. The other issue we have is our internet provider in that location doesn't allow for what's called static IP address. In other words, we ask for an address, it's ours. We have a lease, it stays forever. They use what's called a sticky IP. Well, that's okay until the sticky wears off, and then the IP address changed. And then Reserve Station cannot communicate with us anymore. And this happens with enough frequency that, basically, the system out there is unreliable for them to use for their daily functions. Additionally, Sheriff Marte has expressed interest in using that as an emergency operations failover if need be. And currently with that infrastructure, there is no way we could support that. So what we found out is the actual conduit running that we need ran, the conduit's already in place. So what we need to do now is get fiber ran from the D-market, the highway, to the D-market, the Reserve Center. Then we can set them up with standard switches and get them working as, like every other building we have operates.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Makes sense to me.
Commissioner Githens?
Well, I support this completely, but I also want to applaud the Sheriff Reserves, who do a lot for the county. They volunteer their time. They pay their own way, basically. Pay for their own uniforms, all kinds of things. And this is a really, really incredible service to our community. And so, yes, I support them in getting this, this taken care of.
Sure, agreed. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Davis?
Joe Davis. When I did a ride-along with Supervising Sergeant Deputy Kyle Moulden, and we visited this site, we had to go through two gates to get in there, two gates. If anybody has to make a quick response from this location and go through two gates, that could be the difference between life and death. This has to be changed. It makes sense to have satellite sort of sub-offices for the Sheriff's Department. One north, one south, wherever the officers are most conveniently located in which they reside. Because having to come downtown does not always make sense. We've just, this was shared here. Definitely, communication needs to be improved. We've got to change this gate situation as well. And again, with the new downtown Justice Center in which the Sheriff's Department would also be located, we can, we can start from scratch again. And we can make sure that we have the fiber that gets to all these substations that keeps our community safe. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the Precision Quality Contracting Service Agreement for Sheriff Reserve Building Fiber Connection, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries three zero. Thank you, Mr. Crone. Appreciate you. Next item, please.
Move approval of USI Insurance Services Agreement. Fund name: County General, Fund Number: 1,000, in an amount to be determined.
Second?
We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Purdy or Mr. Cockrell?
I can start it, and then if Mr. Cockrell wants to finish it, he's certainly welcome to do so. At this point, we are looking at changing our brokerage for our liability insurance, not our benefits, health benefits insurance. And we did some research when we were looking into different providers. And this particular provider has risen above others. And we've talked to, I don't remember off the top of my head, it was at least four, possibly five other counties and municipalities in the state. And everyone had nothing but positive comments regarding this provider. One of the things that is specific to this is that we're going to have more communication and education, which is something that I have been desperately needing regarding our liability insurance. And so I'm actually looking forward to understanding more, how this is actually affecting us and being in a better position to explain to everyone what, when we were asking for our premium payments from the council.
Mr. Cockrell, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Not a lot. I would just say that the reason we have the ongoing discussion on the fees is that historically, we've paid for insurance through a contingency fee, or the, basically, the insurance carrier will pay our agent. We're continuing that, at least initially. But I think we're going to explore options where we would do a direct pay, similar to what I think we do with our health insurance. So we haven't gotten there yet with, with that conversation. But that's kind of why that's, that reads the way it does.
That makes sense. Thank you. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens? No. Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
I'm glad you're looking into this. I'm interested to see what comes out of it, so it's a good thing. Any public comment on this item? You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the USI Insurance Services, USI Agreement, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries three zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of the North Park Purchase Agreement.
Second? Sorry.
No, no. And I'd like to add one amendment to what we have here also, which is that we need to change the date on the execution date.
Yep.
I would recommend that date be November 15.
Okay. With mending the contract so that the execution date is honored before November 15, 2024.
Second?
All right. We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Cockrell or Ms. Purdy?
I think I can handle at least the initial part of this. This is, this was on your agenda probably a month and a half ago, hence the reason we need to change that date, because the current, the date that was in that tabled item had expired. I'm not going to get into too much detail, because we just went through a meeting last night where all the, you know, the, kind of the last two, the Vernal Pike, and then the North Park was decided. But I think this is a big deal, so I want to give a little bit of a history on, on how this... And I'm going to start the history in 2019, although it goes back to at least 2001. But in 2019, we were talking with the Indiana Civil Liberties Union about extending our agreed order for our, basically, the number of people we can house in our current facility. And they came back and said, "We're only going to agree to extend that if you do a study to determine the feasibility of using that facility and whether it was big enough in order to continue to operate in a safe manner, in a constitutional manner." We agreed to do that. Those reports came back, and, long story short, that facility was not able to have constitutional-level care. And then that came back in the midst of COVID, so it was all jumbled. And at that point, we've really started looking for properties. We've gotten two reports from two different engineering firms about basic minimum size we need for just the corrections facility. One was at 20 and one was at 25 acres, so fairly large tracts of ground. And then we began a search for at least that size. And then there was also the component of whether we needed to do a co-location. I think, at this point, I think everybody has decided co-location's better. The council has done a, a, a increase in the correctional facilities that would allow for a $200 million budget to do co-location. So really, that 20 acres was meant for just the jail and potential future expansions. If you throw in the co-location, it's clearly larger. And so what this property is, is approximately 57 acres of space that would allow for that co-location, for co-location of all our justice campuses. So this, I mean, the narrowness has been triggered by the jail and the jail. But really, this is the courts and all the related facilities, including the jail going with it, to this location. So that's kind of the background on all this. Talking with, and even sat at the meeting last night, our current facility is in fairly bad shape, and we really need to get moving on going forward. So if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to ask, answer them. I think that, but I think we've talked this, this, this item a lot, and I think the public's well aware of everything that's gone into making this conclusion.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cockrell. Indeed, we are not building a multi-story structure, so that takes out a number of lots in the community. But we asked about Hopewell. We returned down by the city. We had studies done at Thompson, Fullerton Pike, not in that order, and North Park. And then, and the 11th Hour, even though it's a property that we... I know Mr. Cockrell called about initially when we looked at all the maps and saw, you know, where there were large lots, that they declined to, you know, consider selling that property. And then 11th Hour, we get Vernal Pike. And that's clearly, as we talked through last night, not an ideal location for a number of reasons. And, you know, we've held meetings with residents, two at Elsville, one for Vernal Pike, one for Thompson. And those have been really helpful. And I think, you know, can't thank the public enough for showing up and caring and offering input. But, and clearly, you know, we, we want to ensure that the folks who live closest to North Park are, are, their concerns are addressed, and I think some of them can be. And Mr. Kreider's very willing to work with, with them on determining the future use of a large parcel that sits between the one that is on this purchase agreement and the one, and the subdivision, the small subdivision. Nothing's perfect. Nowhere is ever perfect. But we have to think about the future. We have to think about the potential for future growth. I was, you know, very happy to have all of those folks in the room last night. We had the sheriff. We had Chief Deputy Parker. We had Jail Commander Gibbons. We had four members of the council. We had a fifth member of the council who sent a text. And of course, my colleagues. And, and having Mr. Carnegie from DLZ offer insight into what works, what doesn't on the... DLZ offer insight into what works, what doesn't on those properties led to a unanimous, it's not something you see very often in government, is it, unanimous support for North Park. So, that's why we're moving forward today. But, Commissioner Githens, do you have other comments?
Well, this is, this has, as you noted, this has been a multi-year kind of effort that we put a lot of time and energy on. We actually looked at other sites that we didn't even talk about today here. But I want to thank the county council for coming together last night, for listening to what was presented. They seemed to be very open-minded about things last night, which I really appreciated. DLZ has so far been a very, very good partner to work with. Sarah Hamidovitch, a local person with vet engineering, just really, really worked hard to get things to us in a timely manner to help us make those decisions. Like you said, all the residents that came out for the meetings, the sheriff's department has been very, very, just very, very focused. They've helped us understand the urgency of getting this done, and so I fully support this purchase agreement.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes, as has been said, we've been talking about this for a long, long time. And I'm sure we could keep on talking about it for a long, long time without ever coming to a decision. If we wanted to keep on worrying about every single detail that's not absolutely perfect. And there are a number of things that aren't perfect. It would have been much, much better to have been able to locate this within the city limits. That just isn't possible. We certainly gave it a good try. We are behind on this project by at least two and a half years because of those attempts. And at times, it's really been rather frustrating trying to work our way through all of this. But we have had great support. We, in the end, people are really pulling together, and I think that we're going to be able to move forward now that we're past, really, this, I think, probably most difficult decision in the whole process. We're going to be able to move forward and hopefully come up with a jail and a justice campus that the whole community can be proud of. It will be visible. It will be right by I-69. It has easy access to most places in Bloomington, easier access than from downtown to the hospital. And just in many, many ways, does actually fulfill what we're looking for. I know there's been concern that no one will want to build someplace where a jail has been built, that that will mean it'll be the death of that property or something like that. I absolutely do not agree with that. I think that when that much of the county is moved there, it's going to be next to no time before various services will start locating there to serve those people. I think this will be the catalyst for growth in that area, rather than a detriment to it. And I, as I say, I think this is something that the community will end up being proud of, and I'm proud to have been a part of this decision-making. And thank you so much to everyone who has worked on it.
Yeah, great. Couldn't agree more. A lot of great points. This is an important moment. I think you're right about that, for sure. And it's taken a lot of work, a lot of people to get here, a lot of input from the public, and a lot of staff time, of course, as well. So, let's go ahead, and if you're ready, take public comment on this item. Okay. We'll go ahead and take public comment on this item. Public comment time is limited to three minutes per person. You raise your hand on teams, or you may come to the podium in Nat U Hill.
Joe Davis. The public does not want this. The public wants the, this to be downtown, where it is always served the public best. Our taxpayer objection petitioners, we count. We are a growing number of people who do not support this waste of taxpayer funds. Downtown, the lot is already paid for, already paid for. Public owns this land. The public wants the Justice Center downtown. Sure, maybe this is the 12th hour, but this is also the most viable location that we will ever have, ever, where we already have all of our services, already. The people want this, and you are blatantly disregarding the people's wishes. We invested interest, who are the experts making their presentations. The public has been excluded. This is the public's money. The public is the decider. The public is the decider.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to offer public comment on this item? There's a hand raised online, and I cannot see the name, so I only see the initial L. I don't know if TSD, if you can. That's Leah.
You should be able to unmute.
Well, let's go back to the Nat U Hill room for now and see if we can get the resident to unmute. Mr. Parker, Chief Deputy Parker?
I'll try to be brief here. We began discussions about this almost the day that Sheriff Marte became the sheriff, so we're, you're in 10 months in, I think, here. So, it has been a long, arduous, detailed, multiple, multiple, multiple public meeting discussions that have brought us to this day. And it's not lost on me that, over that process, we've heard differing opinions about every location, the size of the jail, the services that are going to be provided in the jail, and those are yet to be determined. But I think, I think you're very right, that this is probably the most important part of that, is where we're going to, where we're going to land here. But, over the course of that time, when you have that many people involved in a decision, it is never easy to do. And we've said over and over again, not everybody's going to be pleased. But I will tell you this. The sheriff has reiterated over and over and over again how there must be some urgency attached to this. So, there's a fine line. Do we move quickly and miss some things, or not do our research, or not vet what we're doing well in the interest of speed, or do we move so slow that the individuals that are working and living in that facility are, continue to suffer? And the ACLU looms watching us as we're doing it. So, I wanted to say this, that the council got together and did their work just a few short weeks ago with the budget. The commissioners have been working on this, this very day, for as long as I've been here, and that's, like I said, about a year and 10 months. But, when we had that meeting last night, I thought it was noteworthy, I would say, that for, I wouldn't say the first time, but it was, it struck me that that entire group, and I think the feeling in the room and the decision to finally make, pull the trigger on this, if you will, was unanimous. I didn't hear any dissent in that room whatsoever. So, I only tell you this, from the men and women of the sheriff's office, and from Ruben Marte, the sheriff, that we're finally looking to where we can, we can now, you know, we can, we can go down the drag strip now. We can start moving here. And I don't think that's any more important for anybody, from our perspective, than the folks that work in that facility and the folks that we are, we are charged with their care. So, I'm not sure where we, where we're going to land on the design and all of that type of stuff. And I'm sure we'll have multiple discussions about that, which we'll have multiple disagreements about it. But I am, I am absolutely confident that that will pan out the same way that, but what's about, I think, to happen today here, is that we'll have those discussions, we'll do our research, we'll involve the community, we'll involve all the stakeholders, and we will make the right decision. And eventually, we'll have a facility that we can provide humane treatment of those that are in our care, and, and a secure facility. And those are what the sheriff and the sheriff's office are worried about. Can we provide humane care, and we can, can we have, can it be secure? And we're going to be able to do that. I think, for the first time in a long time, when that, when we opened the doors on that new facility. So, I just, I thought it, I sat back here and I thought, well, take the win and go home. But, it's very important that I think we can revisit where we're at, why we're here, and how significant this decision is. So, that's Phil Parker's soapbox on behalf of Sheriff Marte.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
It's a nice soapbox. All right. Any other public comment? We lost our hand that was raised. Let's see, any others? Okay. A little anticlimactic. I thought there'd be a lot of folks here, but that's okay. We've heard from them all along.
It's a long meeting.
Well, but also, we couldn't go forward with the true design stuff until we had the location figured out. It was just, that's part of the critical, critical part. And also, we needed to have support from the county council, because even though we signed this contract, they have to approve the money to spend. And so, having all the partners on board was, is just critical.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yeah, I just would want to piggyback on that. Not only do the council have to approve the funding, they also have to approve, by statute, approve the terms and conditions of the purchase. So, this will have to go onto their agenda, and I believe that'll be November 12th, if it gets approved this morning.
Write it down. Did you have anything you wanted to?
Just, once again, to thank everyone who has given input, who's paid attention and cared about this, because this really is a very important issue for our community. And it's probably the biggest vote that I'll ever take.
Yeah. This is, this is a very important day, but so much has gone on before this moment, and so much public input. And, you know, I just, I just want to revisit something, because it was offered up a few weeks ago at our Detmer Park meeting. Why not go back to Fullerton Pike? Well, that took a year. That was a year of filing a petition, going through plan commission at the city, and then through city council. And I don't think we want to risk waiting another year. And we certainly cannot build a multi-story building for a jail. It has failed miserably, as we've seen in our current building, as it's falling apart around their ears. It's, it's not something that we can do. And so, the what-aboutism has to stop, and we need to move forward. But I think we found a really, really good piece of land. And I think Mr. Kreider has made it clear that he's going to be working with those neighbors, and I think that's a really important thing, which alleviates one of my concerns. So, great. Anything else from my colleagues? All right. We'll move on, then. All those in favor of approving the North Park Purchase Agreement, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That is a three zero vote.
Very loud.
We should, we should have had Mr. Cockrell call a role, but, okay, very good. All right. So, thank you, everyone, again, for everything you've done to bring us here, give us information, get us together. Let's move on to item O.
Sheriff, move approval, move approval of the updated New Hope Memorandum of Understanding, fund name, ARPA, fund number, 8950, in an amount of $300,000.
Second.
All right. We have a motion, and we have a second. Mr. Cockrell?
Yes. We did an agreement in 2022 with New Hope for this project, working with Baker Tilly, and, and I believe, the project is, they work in the process of the new construction, including a new kitchen for their, for their daycare. So, that's what the original, working with Baker Tilly, in order to alleviate some of the stresses caused by federal reporting, they've requests, they've, they've, not request, recommended that we change that agreement to the one before you. Essentially, they already have been paid, they still have the money, the project's been complete, but this will treat them as a beneficiary instead of a subrecipient, which has a lot less reporting requirements. And, you know, I think the goal then, the goal now is to support their, their childcare learning system. And either way, we worded, that is still being supported.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Githens?
We know that childcare is a real problem here for our residents, and when New Hope built their new facility, they went from being able to offer 16 slots for childcare to 48, which was a big, big hole that we have in our community. And they're, by providing this money for their kitchen, they're able to get the highest levels of subsidies to help families. So, I'm very proud of what we were able to do with them.
Great. All right. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. See none. All those in favor of approving the updated New Hope Memorandum of Understanding, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of the Updated Habitat for Humanity Memorandum of Understanding, fund name, ARPA, fund number, 8950, in an amount of $3,053,076.
And 76 cents.
$76.
I don't have cents on mine.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Can't see. Second.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. It's, we need to make my glasses up here. We do. We all do. Mr. Cockrell?
And I think the idea behind this one is the same as the idea behind the previous one. There's a slight difference in that Habitat was granted to different projects under ARPA. One was the infrastructure at the Ouseage Place, and the other one, it was eight new homes in 2025. And so, this incorporates both. It requires, it has provisions in there where they will come. It requires, it has provisions in there where they will come and give you a report in '25 and '26 indicating how it was spent. And this also applies to the previous one. The reason we are able to do this is that they, they're headquartered in a qualified census tract, and so that allows us a little bit more flexibility with how we handle their grants. So again, this covering two projects, the infrastructure for phase one of, phase one or phase two of Osage Place, I don't recall, and then also eight new homes. So...
Got it. All right. Commissioner Githens?
No, I'm pleased that we're able to partner with Habitat.
Jones?
Yeah, I'm just very pleased this project is happening.
All right. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U-Hill. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Lindsay Boswell, I'm the Development Director with Habitat for Humanity of Monroe County. On behalf of our staff, board, current and future homeowners, I just wanted to say thank you for your investment and your support of Osage Place neighborhood and of affordable housing and homeownership in our community. Phase, this will go towards phase two infrastructure, which started earlier this fall, and a lot of dirt has been moved, and a lot of progress has been made already and will continue into 2025. And so I just want to thank you for your investment into this property and as well as providing funding for additional homes to be built and, with members of our community. As we know, homeownership provides long-term financial stability, better physical and mental health outcomes, higher education attainment, and increased social and civic engagement with individuals and families. So I invite you all to come see the progress made firsthand in our neighborhood for a build day or a tour. Would be happy to set that up, and thank you all for your help and support on this project.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item? All those in favor of approving the updated Habitat for Humanity Memorandum of Understanding signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries 3-0. We do have some appointments? One appointment?
Move approval of appointing Colby Wicker to the Historic Preservation Board of Review. This would be a term that lasts through January 1st of 2026.
Second. We have a motion, and we have a second. Thank him in advance for offering to serve. All those in favor of approving the appointment signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries 3-0.
Can I add just something? I just want to add that you guys thought that you had made that appointment months ago, and it was just caught that that hadn't happened. So I just kind of want to put that out there.
All right. So as was on the screen when, before the meeting, early voting has begun, and as Dr. Baden pointed out, it is busy, busy. So please consider voting early at 302 South Walnut Street, the former Napa Building. There are COVID-19 tests available at 119 West 7th Street, and we, there's a, oh, CASA training coming up. That's coming up for January 21st to February 20th, that's 2025. Tuesday, Thursday evenings, 5:30 to 8:30. Applications are due by January 10th. Go to monroecountycasaa.org or call 333-2272. We also have applications, we're accepting applications for all boards and commissions. Go to co.monroe.in.us to fill out an application or find more information out about those boards and commissions. We do have virtual office hours via Teams each month, six days each month. Go to the calendar on our homepage, and we have the resident alert system also available on our homepage. Just click on the megaphone to sign up for emergency alerts, traffic, and health updates. All right. We do have a work session item. Do you want to come back at 11:55? Okay. We'll come back at 11:55 for our work session. Thank you, everyone. With that, we are adjourned.